May I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matter related to a particular student, the employment history of three particular employees, collective bargaining with the East Aurora Faculty Association, collective bargaining with the East Aurora Administrators Association, and East Aurora Civil Service Personnel Association, matter related to pending litigation, and matters related to a particular corporation?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion? All of them, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Carried 7-0. Thank you. Discuss. Matters related to a particular student, the employment history of five particular employees, collective bargaining with East Aurora Faculty Association, collective bargaining with the East Aurora Administrators Association, and East Aurora Civil Service Personnel Association, two matters related to pending litigation, and matters related to a particular corporation. Mr. Russ, are there any agenda changes?
Yes, we have two additional items. I under number 12, items requiring board action, approved in 2022, 2025 District Technology Plan, and additional item J under 12, items requiring board action, approved successor agreement, new sparring collective bargaining agreement between the district and East Aurora Faculty Association.
Thank you very much. Item four, items requiring board action. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Jordan Smith, 100 FD elementary education teacher, effective November 5th, 2022.
So moved.
Okay, a vote moved by Mr. Cassidy. May I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion? All of them, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Carried 7-0. Congratulations.
I just want to thank the Board and Administration, and I am looking forward to many more years with the East Aurora schools and community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, superintendent's comment. I'd like to jump in really fast, if I could, just to give a special thank you to Mrs. Weller for her ongoing, many years dedicated to it. From your part, I thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All yours, Mr. Russ.
Yeah, today is one of the best board meetings of the year because we focus on a lot of celebrations and a lot of achievements. And so today, we're going to start with our top 10 seniors. And again, gosh, the work that goes in to achieving top 10 stats in the district is really considerable. And these students have done so many amazing things, both inside and outside of the classroom. And so really grateful that we have some time today to celebrate their achievements. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Roberts and Mr. Moore, and they will introduce each one of our top 10 seniors.
I was going to start by saying they put in so much time and effort that only half of them are here tonight because they're all just studying. I want to start by just thanking our senior class today, we're even day at Parkdale. It was our senior day at Parkdale, and it was organized by Mrs. McAndrews and the senior class, and also Ms. Marius and the spear club. And I think one of the, and maybe the students can jump in if they so desire, but I think one of the most special parts of the day was when the kindergartners came out to join the seniors. And they paired up one-on-one and painted rocks. And it was just, I was looking from a distance and I embarrassed you guys, but I couldn't tell who was more excited, the kindergartners or the seniors. And so that kicked off a wonderful day of activities and food and games. And from the parents that were there, we even saw tears. So wonderful day today. Tomorrow, the seniors are going to be at Camp Skidope San, which has become a tradition. And then working all the way up to graduation, which is only two weeks away. So wonderful time of year, as Mr. Russ said. And we'd like to honor those of the top 10 that could be here today. So would you like us to come up front?
Yes.
So as tradition, Mr. Moore and I will go up in on here. And we do this in a little, what Mr. Moore said.
Alrighty. First person up in alphabetical order, Josh Basella. Mustang. Josh is the son of Kim and David Basella. He's a high-achieving student with a variety of interests, from business to music to even chess. Teachers describe him as someone who goes above and beyond in everything he completes, with a work ethic that is second to none. He described his participation in AP classes such as AP Research and AP Seminar as pivotal in terms of giving him the push he needed to apply himself in school and put his best effort into all of his classes. I actually took a peek today as I was getting ready to do this bio, at his grades. And I could see clear evidence of that work ethic. It's the end of senior year, it can be hard to stay motivated, to push to the end. Last quarter, he had, his grades were seven one-hundredths and 199. That is testimony to your work ethic, your strength, your perseverance, and all those characteristics. In addition to AP SAM and AP Research, he pushed himself to take a variety of other challenging classes, AP Econ, AP US History, Honors, English. He enjoyed participating in extracurricular activities outside of school and inside of school, including jazz band musical, and he says that left him with great memories and fun experiences. He says he plans to continue his education by getting his bachelor's in accounting at Canisius and continuing on to becoming a CPA. Congratulations.
I know that Dylan B. loves to be the center of attention, so. She's the daughter of Jennifer and John B. Dylan is a highly motivated, respectful, and always positive young woman. And when I wrote that to Dylan, I didn't realize that you would put that into practice this morning. We had a graduation planning committee meeting, and we're making some major decisions around graduation. And quite frankly, I turned to Dylan so she could guide the group to the best decision possible. And it was just awesome to see a senior in high school sort of take the room, take control of the room, and even help the adults make some good decisions. So looking forward to a ceremony inspired by her. To say that East Aurora High School, or her East Aurora High School experience has been jam-packed would be an understatement. One of her teachers stated that Dylan is always thinking of others, works hard in everything she's involved in. But I love this part, does not over-commit to things, but is involved with enough that she can give 100% to everything. That's very unique and commendable. With what I am about to describe Dylan, this was a quote that stood out to me. She is selected, or is in a select group of students who completed the four-year STEM program. She challenged herself academically and earned the recognition of AK Scholar with honors by earning a three or higher on at least three exams. And by the way, in case you're wondering, she took 10 AK courses. She's been, has also taken advantage of numerous extracurricular opportunities offered by being a part of the Executive Board, Masterminds, National Honor Society, and the bowling club. She is especially proud of her work as president of Connect Life, where she held numerous successful blood drives at the high school. Dylan was the captain of the tennis team and helped lead the team to a section title. All of these incredible experiences and her academic rigor will serve her well as she attends Brandeis University in the fall.
I'm not so, I'm just saying.
Toss! That's a good choice, too. Before I screw it up, will you give me a hydrant?
I'm preparing classics and biology.
Okay, I will screw that up, but that's okay. So Dylan, congratulations and thank you.
Next up, somebody who hates being the center of attention. Charlie in Proto. Charlie, Charlie's the son of doctors Maria and John in Proto. Charlie's teachers describe him as a born leader, we see this every day, with compassion and a great sense of humor. His gregarious nature and contagious energy make an impact on everyone he interacts with. He's maintained academic excellence in a highly rigorous academic schedule with classes like AP Calc, AP Lit, AP Language, Honors, English. But in addition to academics, his success can almost be more clearly seen through all of the extracurriculars and the school activities he participates in. Concert band for four years, the musical for four years, jazz band this year, and even culminating at the end of the year with a riveting performance of toast to award him as Mr. EA in our Mr. EA competition. Charlie describes music as a huge part of his life, and he looks forward to seeing how musical play a role through the years. His involvement in school also extended to athletics, he played a role in a number of teams, most recently joining the unified basketball team as a partner. Charlie plans to study pharmaceutical sciences in college. Congratulations.
This is Grace Quiddick, and she is the daughter of John and Jessica. So Grace is an outstanding athlete, a natural leader, and a driven scholar. She is driven and determined, yet, and I love this, compassionate, kind, funny, and down-to-earth. She is passionate about learning and consistent in her goals to help others. Grace strives to be the best version of herself that she can be. And, if I may say, she is quite impressive. She has participated in many AP courses. She's a varsity swimmer, she's a varsity indoor track athlete, an outdoor track and field athlete, a class executive board member, a donate life club member, and a National Honor Society member. And I've got to say, very unselfish. I remember hearing a story about this year's track and field season where she basically said, wherever you need me, I'm there for you. And as a senior athlete, and a tremendously successful senior athlete, I think that says a lot about her character. Recently, Grace was one of East Aurora High School's first recipients of the New York State Seal of Bioliteracy in Latin. In each activity, Grace has formed long-lasting friendships and has created memories that she will cherish for years in the future. As one of her teachers stated, whether it's swim, track, or school, Grace is the hardest working person I have ever seen. Grace is looking forward to attending Colgate University, did I get that right? Majoring in Biology and Pre-Medicine, and will run track with the goal of becoming a doctor. So ladies and gentlemen, the valedictorian of the class of 2022, Grace.
Nathan Klein is next. Nathan is the son of Christine and Glenn, and he said his time at East Aurora has provided him with countless opportunities and unforgettable experiences that have helped him to grow as both a person and student. His teachers describe him as dedicated to learning and seeking knowledge, and that can be seen in his participation in the STEM program. In addition, Nathan took a highly challenging schedule, which included AP Calc, AP Chem, AP Econ, AP Gov, AP Bio, AP Language, AP US, and AP Physics. I can barely say it, let alone take it, that's amazing. Nathan is very balanced in his interests, however, and those extend far beyond the classroom. He's a pianist and has an interest in computer programming, and is motivated by a strong work ethic and desire to do his best. He has a passion for helping others, which can be seen through his participation in community service and missions. And after high school, he plans to study computer science at RIT. Congratulations. Alright. I am double dipping, going two in a row. Next up is Abby Seener. Abby is the daughter of Colleen and James. Abby describes her time at East Aurora High School as an incredible journey that she is amazingly grateful for. Academically, Abby's experience has been exemplary, taking a challenging course load, which is highlighted by two of the most challenging courses that EHS has, here's a senior, Anatomy and Physiology and AP Calc simultaneously. That's amazing. Her interests, though, are varied, and her participation in school activities has made a strong impact on our community. She's participated in National Honor Society, the musical, varsity sports, field hockey and lacrosse, and a number of clubs. Through this involvement, she says she formed incredible friendships and created countless memories that she will fondly look back on. She's planning to attend Gannon University in a 3+4 accelerated dental program with Case Western Reserve University and their School of Dental Medicine after her graduation. Congratulations.
So twin sister Paige, and Mr. Moore and I were talking earlier, and we even found a tremendous amount of resemblance between what I'm saying about your sister and what I'll be saying about you, so I think you guys are probably used to that, though. So Paige has maintained an outstanding GPA while participating in sports and clubs, and at the same time actively involved in the greater community. To say that she is well-rounded student would be an understatement. Her experiences at East Aurora High School provided her with endless opportunities to develop in character, shape her aspirations, grow as a person and as a student. She's participated in AP courses, musical, captain of the varsity field hockey team, varsity lacrosse, National Honor Society, just to name a few. In her free time, she enjoys reading, sewing, and spending time with friends. Paige is quick to thank her parents, who I know she's very close with, teachers, friends, and family, for the unwavering support that have allowed her to find her success as a student. And I believe the sky is the limit for you and your sisters. And we look forward to hearing of both of your successes. Again, heading to Gannon University to participate in that 3+4 program with Case Western, and she has the dream of becoming a dentist. So Paige, congratulations.
Nolan is the son of Sylvia and Tim. Nolan's teachers have described him as innovative and creative, constantly developing solutions to designated problems both inside and outside the classroom. As a student, he has taken almost every STEM course available, from AP Physics to Engineering to Electricity, and the list could go on. Outside the classroom, he's been involved in a wide variety of activities. He has an interest in athletics, especially as an integral member of the wrestling team. He participated in a number of student clubs and organizations, including NHS, Student Gov, Exec Board, and the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. And did I see also the Waffle Club was in there as well? Through these activities, he said he was presented with many opportunities to grow for the future. Moving forward, he plans to pursue a degree in Mechanical Engineering at the University of Buffalo. Congratulations.
Nolan, that was great timing, as you were being introduced, your tech crew showed up in uniform to celebrate this accomplishment. That's a first, so congratulations. Alright, Ryan Zapp. Hi, Ryan. Ryan is the son of David and Linda Zapp. Ryan is truly outstanding in every possible way. His accomplishments are numerous, many in the areas of writing. And to add one more, just this morning, he was selected by our graduation planning committee to be one of the commencement address speakers, which I know he's nervous about, but he's going to do an incredible job. Ryan has stated that the past four years have meant more to him than he could have ever imagined when he started at East Aurora High School as a freshman. He has taken advantage of everything that East Aurora has to offer, from extracurricular activities, including cross-country and track, the spring play, National Honor Society, Latin Club Literary Magazine, and the yearbook staff. He has been in the school STEM program, he's also taken AP courses to his heart's content, seven to be exact. He is thankful to his teachers, his coaches, his friends, his family for being supportive through his time at East Aurora High School. He plans to continue to pursue the passion of creative writing while studying geoscience at Penn State in the fall. Ryan, congratulations.
get to the finals.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ryan Wall, I teach high school tech here, and I'm here to talk about Rocket Club and to honor the Rocket Club, as we had a pretty fantastic year. We made it to the national competition, which is quite a challenging task. We finished 21st at Nationals, and it wasn't easy. Thomas, Adam, Zach, Oliver, and Parker all worked incredibly hard to achieve this goal. When I say hard, I mean 80, 100 hours in the classroom, simulating, doing simulations, testing, failing, testing, fantastic, testing, testing, testing. I think they did over 1,000 simulations. The modeling software that we use called RockSim, put up probably 10 to 15 test flights. And fortunately, we qualified for that national competition, and they did a fantastic job, and it was a lot of hard work. So proud of you guys for everything you've done this year, and now we're on to the next year, and we started working on building that rocket, so very excited about that.
Just like to say that Mr. Wall, we've been running the club for about five or six years.
Six years, yeah.
And so every year, they've kind of improved their process. And so they've been competing and taking that information, coming back and reformulating it, back and forth and back and forth, like you said, numerous trials. And it takes a lot of perseverance to stick with it, because it's easy to give up, right, when you get frustrated. And this group didn't do that, and for them to achieve 21st at the national competition is just extraordinary. It's, you're competing against students from all over the country, and it's just, this achievement is really quite astonishing. And then there's the next step that we're finding out about, and do you know any?
Yeah, so we're, because we are in the top 25, we qualify for the National Student Launch Program, which is a program where you build a high-powered rocket. So we go do trainings, you can then start to build that rocket, and then I think it's in April of next year, you can go down to Alabama and launch it. We could launch one here, but you need to be certified to do that, and I'm not certified in high-powered rockets.
Oh, my insecurity.
Maybe someday, you gotta, you know, learn the FAA and everything before you do that, because they go pretty high. Yes, but as you said, that, we've been trying for a long time, and it's not easy to do. A couple of schools from around here have qualified for Nationals before, but none of them have ever made it to the finals. So there's two rounds, you go there, you fire up one rocket, and then the top 40 move on to the second round, and no school from Western New York has ever done that, so that was a little bit of accomplishment for us, and it tested how hard what's worked.
Do you want to just call them up?
Sure, sure, come on, we'll start on the end here with Parker Madigan.
These are all juniors, yes. This is a junior team, we had one 10th grader who was not here. Alright, next up, we got Oliver Satchuk.
Got Zach, ready? And Thomas Riker Jr. And as you can tell, folk helps us out a lot, so they give us swag, they help fund the program, and also mentor us, so it's neat that they're working with engineers.
Parents, if you want to come up and take pictures. Anybody wants to take a picture? Come on. It'll be amazing to be in a picture. I like your attire.
Oh, sorry, that, go ahead. Just wanted to tell those wires.
Oh, yeah.
That's true.
So just one more recognition before we get to the topics, and so we have our retirement on the Board of Education. Judy Malice has been with us for nine years, and many years before that, as a teacher for the district. And Judy, we're just so grateful that we've had you as a partner for the last nine years. You always have students first, that's always been your goal, you've always been supportive and creative and dedicated to just creating opportunities for our kids like this, always supporting these types of things that we started about six years.
for our kids like this, always supporting these types of things that we started about six years ago. Of course, it takes funding and a lot of time and effort, getting the right person to lead the group. And you've always been behind every single one of those things. So we couldn't be more grateful for your dedication to our district, to our students, and to this board. It's been a lot of work. And so we're just grateful that we had this time with you, and we wish you the very best, and we hope you stick around and maybe come in and sub or something like that.
I am planning on, but I'm going to talk to Matthew.
So again, just on behalf of the district, just a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And now it's time for the first.
Thank you.
We had three other retirements that were scheduled for today, but they couldn't be with us. Lynn Cornell, Natalie Dutton, and Walzki. So we're going to try again in July to see if they're able to make that happen.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item six, board president and board member comments and committee reports. The policy committee met, including Mrs. Daniel, Mr. Cassidy, and me, this Monday. We continued our review. Thank you, Mr. Mary Ready, for birding all the cats and all of the words and continuing us through the process. Obviously, there are a number of policies up for first and second readings this evening. We have another meeting coming up, and we will continue our work before we get our summer homework. And we can meet again. Thank you. Just so.
We had a capital facilities meeting on June 3rd. I saw me for discussion for later. The only thing I will mention, though, is that unrelated to our upcoming discussion is that we are ordering a new tent for the high school that got destroyed in the windstorm. Our insurance is covering it, so they are ordering one, which is good news. And then the next thing, Kim, Judy, and myself have met the last three times since our last meeting reviewing the new social emotional learning curriculum. And there were five programs that were presented to Ms. Lyons, and her and her team researched five. They piloted two the last couple of months. The social workers and counselors and Ms. Lyons would push into classrooms and try them out. And they came up with one, and it's one that they're recommending, and it's called Character Strong. It's vertically aligned, K through 12, and it goes K to 5 is one program, and 6 to 12 is the other program. In Parkdale, the social workers and the counselors would be pushing into the classrooms once on a, once every sixth day in the cycle. And it'd be about 30 to 45 minutes long. The middle school is going to be done in the health classes. So every, again, by the social workers and counselors. Every other day for 20 weeks, the students will get this. And the rest of the year, they will get it through the phys ed classes because all of the phys ed and health teachers at the middle school will be trained in this. And the high school, they're still trying to figure the schedule out. There's some discussion about two student wellness days or having wellness, one wellness Wednesday is once a month. They're still trying to figure all of that out. And the training is going to be done in the stores. They're actually coming here to our training as opposed to having to spend the money and sending all of our teachers and our staff out. I really liked the program because it has activities that are not just for the students, but also for families. There's a family challenge and that the families can do at home, and they're very simple, but it's something that incorporates what they've learned in school. There's also a thing called purposeful pursuits that is for the faculty. And it's kind of like icebreakers. It's a way for the faculty to kind of come together and have that camaraderie. I think it would be phenomenal for them as well. So I really, really like the program. Ms. Lyons is going to be presenting on it, hopefully at our July meeting. And there was some talk about potentially presenting this to the parents in August or September. So then the parents could actually come in, see a lesson, see exactly what this curriculum is all about, which questions answered, et cetera. It's a program that I really think is trying to help all of our students, students, community, families, faculty. It was just a really, really good program. So I applaud you for all the hard work you did to narrow it down to this one or two little program.
That's it. Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Oiler. Miss Kelt? Hold, I'm going to put a pin in this bell.
Yeah, I think we left.
Mrs. Mr. Cassidy?
Yeah, thanks for, you know, I think we followed. I just two, two quick things. One, I had the pleasure of attending the student academic recognition dinner at Sard. With, with Mr. Russell and Mr. Roberts and Paige Grace, who were here tonight, and Johnny, who was not here. And it was for all of the, the school districts in Erie and Niagara County. And it was just, it was a great way to recognize students from all of the, all of the schools. And it was, it was really nice. Other thing was, last night, I got to go to the seventh and eighth grade band, or orchestra and chorus concert at the, at the high school. And the one, one thing I wanted to say about that that I thought was great, and I didn't get to go to the band concert the week before, but I know they did it there too, is they brought down students from the high school to participate in the orchestra last night. And there were, I don't know, they, they stood up there probably at, maybe at least a half a dozen, probably more. And I just, I thought that was really, really cool and probably a nice experience. It seemed like maybe they were paired up. They, they selected, or, or maybe the kids self-selected because they had siblings in there. But it was, it was really neat. It was something that I had not observed.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Mr. Flowers?
Yeah, yeah. Judy, thanks for serving for that year. I'm not good with numbers, but I did multiply it out, and that's 108 months. But I'd been at it 10 months, and I'm exhausted. I don't expect to be, but positive, and certainly to the asset of the boy in education. The, I talked to the internal auditor, and he wants to get the committee band back together. So we're, he's sent to ask the business officer some information until we can move forward. The internal audit will have a meeting sometime down the road. The information he asked for, I think, will take a little while to accumulate based on what I read. The internal audit is going to focus this year on a review of the payroll and personnel, travel and conference, student-related data, attendance, reliability, student performance data, and then follow up on this 6/30/21 information. So we've got a lot on our plate. So we'll be active, we'll be reaching out to you and other members of the government. And then the external audit, I'm assuming we'll need a meeting on that prior to the actual audit we usually do, or?
Yes, we will.
So you'll set up, check his calendar or something, see what works out for Dave?
Yes, we can send out an email to the whole audit committee.
Okay, so then that'll be the next one. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Mrs. Danny?
Um, you and Mrs. Oiler covered our case, but if you want to take a second to say it's been an honor serving you over the last nine years. You, Mr. Russell said to have always put our students first, and it's just really been wonderful to have you on the board. And your passion.
Thank you, Mrs. Danny. Mrs. Brunson?
Well, I would echo the sentiments as well, Judy. Judy and I were colleagues here at the middle school for a number of years. And I still remember getting wonderful little missiles in my mailbox. I know they actually have a mailbox. But Judy would always say things like, "Tach them doing well." Look, look for a way to reinforce positivity in nature. And, and just practical advice on how to work with children. So thank you for that, Judy, and for your service on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Mrs. Malice, you have everyone's thanks and gratitude and appreciation. What do you have to say for yourself?
Well, I never left. I just wanted to say the SEL program that Jess is looking at is phenomenal. It is, it's so essential. Mental health is such a big issue, and I worked with behavioral middle school boys mainly, which everybody says you had to be crazy. And I know, they, I loved these boys dearly, and I still see them from time to time, different ones of them. And I have to say, one of the things that was the hardest, at middle school, it's kind of a me, myself, and I attitude. They haven't quite developed that empathy. So this program is going to help kids to start seeing the responsibility toward one another, and the empathy that's necessary that builds over time. And I just think that's going to be a blessing. Anyway, that's my board business. Maria, I have things for you. You know, we keep saying that we don't keep up on our policies. This was the original policy book that I received. I just want you to like, no, there's just a couple in there that we could cover. I'm sure they'll fall in here. And then, of course, you want to keep up on school law. It's his own character, and you get one of these every year so you can keep up on school law. And just in case this isn't good enough, you need to know the Robert's rules.
Oh, my God, I know those.
So these are all there for you, and that's my gift to you.
Oh, thank you so much. I swear I came, I said to my husband, I certainly have both those hearts.
It's all online now, actually. I can imagine how intimidated I was when I received this, just so you know. Anyway, I wanted to say a couple of things. It's been a privilege for 21 years to not only teach in the district, but have the privilege to give back. I was raised on a dairy farm in Rushford, and my parents went to Cornell during the Great Depression. I was raised by the greatest generation. And because of that, we, we were, it's just natural to help one another. It just wasn't something you thought about. My dad went to Cornell on the first candy cat scholarship. And so I guess to end up where I did, first in nursing, as a registered nurse and an OB-GYN nurse. And then eventually, my dream, I wasn't till, I didn't start teaching till I was sporting. So I, it was just such a privilege to, to teach in this middle school. But my thoughts have always, have always centered around Group 12, to whom much is given, much is required. And when I was young, I guess I thought about that as being wealth or, you know, that sort of thing. But as I, as I grew up, I started to realize, especially after I started teaching, it had so much more to do with your knowledge and your time. And that's what the board is. It's a giving back of time. I am so grateful for, for my board colleagues that I've had the privilege of working with for nine years, for the administrators, that you have no idea how many hours they put in. And most of all, for the teaching and staff colleagues that I've worked with over the years. They're just dear to me to this day. I love every one of them, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of them when I sub next year. I'd also like to thank the community. I was at a community meeting this week and was talking with Jackie. And I'd like to thank the community for the, for coming out to vote in an unprecedented manner. It was, it was absolutely incredible. They voted not only for the board, but they voted for a budget. And they've done that and stood behind us year after year after year. And sometimes we've asked them to go over the tax limit, and they have been willing to do that. And by the way, a lot of it's your senior citizens, just so you know. Their voices through their vote were kind of loud and clear. And never say, never say that your vote doesn't matter. Because in this democracy, which is at risk right now, we need to realize that our most precious right is our vote, and it's a privilege. And as we raise these children up to be critical thinkers, it's going to be vital that we continue to think about that, to help instill in them that sense of empathy for one another, that sense of community, that sense of need beyond yourself, that it's not just all about me, myself, and I. It's truly about how we help one another in this world. And it's been a privilege to, to be able to feel like I give back. I still, I'm still at Fish, it's a fish banquet today. And it's, it's a pleasure to find ways to give back. And if every one of us raise our children up to feel that way and to understand that they control what goes on in this country through their vote, it would be incredibly god-able. And I just know you're all going to do that, and I'm just grateful. Maria, good luck.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Malice. All right, sorry, everyone that has. Moving on to item seven, administrator comments. Is there anyone who would just address the board's opinion? Thank you all for being here. Oh, sorry, did I miss? Oh, I'm so sorry.
I just wanted to recommend that everyone pay attention to their, their social media starting tomorrow and Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We have a number of athletes heading up to state competitions. The track team is heading to the Syracuse area. And our boys tennis team, it's the first ever, I think we mentioned this, is the first ever team championship. And the team has qualified for the state semifinals down in New York City. So pay attention, both exciting teams, great athletes, and kids that are just ending the year on such a positive, on both track and, and tennis. So we'll try and post as much of that as, as we can over the next couple of days.
You want, you want to share something about today too? Just give us, whatever, what the seniors did today, do you want to share that?
I, I did a little bit about the seniors at Parkdale, it's great.
Yeah, but yeah, just tell them about the whole thing.
Oh, so, yeah, this has become a wonderful tradition. And like I said, when we arrived, it was, it was the paint, painting of rocks with our kindergarteners, and then transitioned into some, some lawn games. And we had a lunch sponsored for us. And then the, the true excitement, we also had our senior academic awards. We did post those on social media, so if you're curious about who won the different department awards, we did post that out. But the true excitement for the, for the seniors is, is the field day games. So again, I think I alluded to this earlier. You're taking 17, 18-year-olds who are ready to, to jet out of here for all kinds of adventures in their life. And they go right back to being third, fourth, fifth graders, competing in very silly games and becoming very competitive, but, but loving every minute of, of that experience. So Mr. Moore and I, as you can tell by our sunburn, just sat back and watched and enjoyed the fun and the smiles and the laughter. And then at the, the end of the day, the, the music starts and, and our, our seniors line up and they parade through the hallways of Parkdale. And again, the excitement that we saw in the elementary students was contagious amongst our 17 and 18-year-olds as, as they emotionally walked through the halls and, and some saw siblings, but most saw those influential teachers that they had had through, through their years at Parkdale. And a special, special event that, again, we talk about the, the things that we've done during the pandemic to, to create moments and create memories. And this is an example of that. We did something different, and it'll be a tradition forever and ever. So, yes.
Man, just to add to that, so we will post the walking of the, through the hallways online. It was amazing that the kids were standing there, and the, the kindergartners were shouting, "Senior, senior, senior." And then the seniors, when they walked in, they were all ready to walk, but they walked in and they were just shocked into silence. They didn't know what to do. And then the kids are high-fiving them, and they were definitely, like, they were so rowdy outside, and then they walk in, and they're like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. And then to see the teachers that, like you said, that they had come out and hug them, congratulate them, high-five, it was just, it was, I was only a little tearful. But it was neat to see, and it was also to see them playing the games. I've been at every single field day for, I don't know, 12 years. And it was so, it's so amazing to watch them, like, you look at them, go, yeah, that's the exact same kid that in fourth grade shoved that kid down. Or that exact same person that was crying in first grade, like, it's the same, like, but they, they were just bigger, and it was just, they played so hard and so intensely. That was the only difference probably from, like, first grade to this. They were intense, and they wanted to know who the winner was, and it was awesome. So we've got like 100 or so pictures that we will put up. So please, everybody, take a look at it, because it was fun.
And the, the last thing I'll leave you with is, is the, one of the best moments to me of the entire school year. So 160 so seniors lined up their group picture. And honestly, I don't know who said it, but someone said, "Let's sing the."
The Parkdale song.
Song.
So we have it, they sang it in a round.
And in chorus, they sat there as a group and sang the Parkdale song.
The whole Parkdale song. I'll make sure I put that, I'll send that to you.
Beautiful.
Oh, it was so good.
Yep, yep. And then I said, listen, now you need to sing the high school on the water, and they all looked at me like. We have failed, and Park failed.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thank you, Mr. Moore, and Mrs. Cantoa. Thank you for continuing to build that school community and that creative thinking.
Yes.
So incredible. I love that this far into pandemic time, you still keep going and building new creative things that'll become the, the new great stuff that will build on for the years. Thank you for building those memories for our seniors. What a great dose of community pride to offset that senioritis. Way to fuck them.
Yeah, I'll just make one comment. It's just a shout out to Mrs. Klunchak, who, who really pushed the Parkdale Pride song. Now singing it every time she went there. So that's, that's why we remember it.
Yeah.
I think every parent who had a kid.
Yeah, every.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone else, any other administrator?